Well, good evening and welcome to Salem City Council. We're going to begin this evening, as you can tell, a little early at 5:15. We have a work session on a prospective infrastructure bond measure and kind of taking a look at the need and some financing mechanisms that have been brought to us. So I'll call this meeting then to order and ask for a roll call.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
She will be a few minutes late. She's stuck at work.
She's just trying to...
How about that? Just in time. But thank you, Counselor Hoy, for the shout out. Much appreciated. That was a miracle. Sorry.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Very good. Counselor Hoy, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And then Counselor Hoy, motion to approve special meeting agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second. Second by Counselor Phillips. Any discussion? Okay, if you call the roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. And then do we have any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. Then we will move forward. I'm going to call on City Manager Powers to kind of get us started on the information we'll be going over tonight on this proposed bonding strategy. So, Mr. Powers?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, councilors, for jumping on early. Tonight is your opportunity to learn more about a recommendation from the Finance Committee and Chairperson Anderson will be providing an overview here in a moment. Assisting with your increasing your knowledge will be John Horvick and Courtney Knox-Bush, sharing some early findings from some preliminary outreach that we've done regarding public support for the city's infrastructure needs. Josh Eggleston, our Acting Chief Financial Officer, will be sharing with you how this infrastructure bond could work, the flat tax rate opportunity that we have. And then on the meeting are key staff that can answer questions that you might have regarding the categories that are tentatively included in a bond as well as potential projects. And then if time permits, we're prepared to answer any questions you might have regarding the approach, regarding next steps, and there are a couple of next steps this evening. And then a timeframe for returning to you if council chooses to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, you want to give us kind of a little overview here?
Sure, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee for the past oh year, year-plus has been discussing this, and we are in a rather unique situation here in that prior bond measures for infrastructure have, are still continuing, but they're about to be paid off. And when they're paid off, what happens normally is the rates go down, and then when we need to have another one, the rates go back up. And as it stands right now, we have up to $300 million worth of infrastructure repair and maintenance, everything from fire engines to housing and sheltering, to streets and bridges, to parks, to information technology, to all sorts of public building improvements that need to be done on our very, very large physical plant that the city has. And we've got to maintain it, just like we all have to maintain our homes. And the unique situation we are in here is that we can do this without any increase in the bond rate that of $128 per thousand dollars of property assessed, $1.28 per thousand dollars of property assessed, because that is what the rate is now. And that same rate will allow us to make all these maintenance and repairs and improvements up to $300 million without increasing the tax on the property of the people and property owners in the city of Salem. So it will not, they will not see any difference in what their tax is, at least from, coming from the city, but they will get just a wide, wide panoply of good services that will affect almost every area of the city. And the bond measure is not until next November, so we've got 13 months. And on any kind of bond measure, it's much better that we go out and educate the public and have a long-term plan to do this, and that's what the recommendation will call for. The citizens of Salem, and we talked about this before as the council, have been more than generous, and when we explain to them what the need is, they come through. And so what we need to do is explain the need and explain the fact that it will not be any more out-of-pocket expenses than what they already are incurring, and we will get up to $300 million worth of benefits from this. And I know that John is here, and the, it was a very good job by our focus groups that were looking at other issues but also looking at this. And what is clear from looking at what the public knows of this, if they just say, "A new bond issue for new spending with no details," you know, it's an iffy proposition. But the more the focus groups were clear, the more they learned about both the actual no increase in cost and about all the benefits, the more favorable they are to it.
Right.
So I would suggest that with a long-term process and education by each one of the councilors and the staff, that we can be optimistic that the citizens of Salem a year from November will support this bond because it is important and vital for the city to maintain its infrastructure and keep care, take care of a physical plant as well as providing for the needs of citizens of Salem. So that's my campaign speech, Mr. Mayor.
No, I know, and, and, well done, well done. I'm for it. I'm with you. Got a, got one vote so far. John, why don't you explain to us what the rest of this town thinks about this, this proposal? Looking forward to hearing what you found.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I have some slides that I'm going to try to show, just to, if nothing else, keep me organized. One second as I pull those up. Do you all see that?
Yes.
All right. I'll get it in the right mode here. All righty. Well, pleasure me back again. It's been a real delight to be able to talk to community members about, well, the Community Satisfaction Survey work we did, but then to dig into what they'd like in the future for their community, including the infrastructure needs for the city. I, I think I only have about 10 minutes, so I'm going to be pretty brief with my comments, and then use whatever we have for questions. But just to remind folks, we did two focus groups in September, consisted of 20 likely voters, based on past vote behavior, so folks that had voted in at least two of the last four elections, and some tried to match the demographics for a likely voting population as well. They were two-hour sessions. They were conducted online, consisted of both group discussions, talking to each other, and then also some written responses as well. There's a full written report, has all the answers to all the written exercises, the transcripts have been made available, the videos are available. So anybody who does want all those details or make their own interpretations, all those materials have been provided. We, so in the structure of the focus group, what we did, it was began the focus group by asking, "Hey, just what's the most important issue?" Some of that is for us just to hear what's on people's minds and see how that might be connected or not to an infrastructure bond measure. Also, it's to get people talking about community issues, but we began talking about that. And then we ran them through four tests of the bond, each with some additional information, some provided by us, and some information that they shared with each other, their conversation and thinking about it. But first, it was this initial test where we said, "Hey, it's a $300 million bond for infrastructure paid by property taxes, support or oppose," some discussion. And then they got a little bit more information. That next bit of information was, you know, really related to what Counselor Anderson was just talking about, that these replaced older bonds and the property tax rates are not expected to increase. They gave them a little more information about the planning that's gone into selecting these sorts of projects and the community involvement going forward. They looked at some and talked about some reasons for and against, and then at the end of the group, they weighed in again. So that's the flow. So it started basically with no information at all. We gave them information along the way. We listened to how people responded to that information, what was important to them, how it moved them or not, and then we kept layering more information as we went. Now, if you read the report, you know that out of the gate, people were pretty ambivalent. They were, they were conflicted as a, as a group. So eight, so what this shows here is the fourth test, support and oppose on the, on the question, do you vote yes or no on this, of the fourth test I just talked about. The initial test on the left here, it supported it, nine opposed it, three were undecided. You'll see, the informed test, the very next one, once they learned key information, and I think the real key information is, I'll talk about was, property tax rates are expected to stay flat. Learning that was really key to moving people to be supportive. There's other things to learn for sure, but that bit of information was quite persuasive and important to people. Became even stronger once they learned more about what sort of projects that this was going to fund and community involvement in selecting this project, and then it held strong at 15 out of 20 participants at the end. You'll notice that we, this is a focus group, one fewer, one person fewer supported it at the very end compared to the informed test, that third one, and there were a couple more bits of opposition at that last test, too. At that point, they, we intentionally asked, you know, we hear reasons that people might oppose it, and I think that that influenced some folks as well. So, ambivalent at the get-go, learning about tax rates, very persuasive to folks, moved them strongly to supportive. We held that support throughout the group. That's kind of the big picture takeaway. Now, what were the reasons for increasing support? This is laid out in depth in the, in the full report that we provided, but as I just said, we saw that big bump from the initial test to that informed that property tax rates aren't going, aren't going to increase, knowing that's really important for the reasons I think are pretty intuitive. But people do assume, I think reasonably, that if you're asking them to say yes to a tax measure, that that's going to come with an increase in their taxes. And so being dissuaded of that or learning that that's not the case is, is important for folks. Now, it's important to say, too, that these projects broadly aligned with their priorities, especially with transportation, acquiring land for affordable housing and shelter is not, I didn't list it here, but, but fire equipment, too. I'll say with fire equipment, there's not a sense of need, right? People want to support public safety projects. They're supportive of that once they learn that it is a need, but they did not walk into the focus groups thinking that that's a problem that needs to be solved, right? So to the extent that if that's going to lead, there's going to need to be some information that goes along with that, that voter, to voters, that it's a, it's a problem that, that needs solving, because it's not, it's not, it's not fixing something that they're experiencing in the day-to-day life, right? They don't know about it. But it's something that they support, and they're, they're glad to, these participants were glad to fund it once they understood the need that existed. Community input, that was important to folks. Now, I'll talk a little bit more in just a second about what we heard on the, kind of the other side of it, but, but know that hearing that citizens were involved and, you know, thinking about what the priorities were, that there could be community oversight in the future, that was persuasive to folks and important to folks. So that was a reason for moving towards support as well. And long-term planning, we heard over and over again, and not just in these groups, but in general, the government doesn't do long-term planning, and they come and ask us for tax increases all the time, you know, hearing that, that thought had been put into this to meet long-term needs, that this means that, that, you know, we won't be coming back to us over and over again to say yes to more tax increases. That was, that was helpful as well. But the big two are really, the top two are listed here, no property tax increases and that the projects align with their priorities. Those are the big ones, and the others are supplemental, I'd say. Now, we heard concerns, too, particularly at the beginning of the focus groups, and we've heard often was just distrust of government. Some of that is directed specifically at the city of Salem, and it would be wrong for me to suggest otherwise, but a lot of it is just generalized distrust in government, that people have a difficult time articulating a particular incident or individual. It's just, it is, it's soaked into the fabric of our electorate right now, of our body politic right now, and that affects what people are thinking about local funding measures. So know that, that that is just in the environment right now, that sort of that distrust of government, that's a hurdle to get over. And then this is also not unique to Salem or at this time, but there's a lot of, or the low awareness of just how local government is funding. So we heard a number of comments, things like, "Well, can't they just use the marijuana tax money to fund infrastructure?" Well, they ain't enough money, and no, you can't, right? But when people don't know or have misperceptions about how government is funded, what things cost, and you distrust government, like you could see the disconnect when local folks are asking them to vote yes on a tax measure. Those, again, are not unique to Salem, but they're present, and, and they're hurdles to, to get over. They had a number, because of the distrust in government, they had a number of questions about oversight. They really wanted to know, like, "Tell me the projects that are going to happen. When are they going to happen? How were they decided?" And also, who's going to oversee how the money is spent? This is somewhat challenging insofar as people will tell us frequently in focus group settings like this, that the government never tells us how money is spent. Why don't they just say, "Post it on the website"? Well, of course, you know, you do things like that. So you are definitely going to hear going forward, people questioning whether or not you're being transparent with spending money, and to all your best efforts, people are going to continue to say that, which is not to say that things can't be improved or perfected or, or whatever, but that's just a fact, that people will talk about wanting information, wanting transparency, but often aren't doing the work to go find it. But that's just another concern that is out there, and you certainly want to get up in front of that and being able to communicate to voters how you have been good stewards of money and being transparent about how it's been spent and how that those things will continue going forward. And then there's just, you know, uncertainty about benefit. So, you know, people not only wanted to know how the money was going to be spent and what projects are going to be prioritized, but what were the outcomes that we were going to see? So if there's money going to be spent on transportation, what's the goal that's going to be met? How are these projects going to improve livability? And also, they wanted to understand and impress upon you that, you know, these investments are not, will also do things like help make the city more attractive for business that has, you know, ancillary benefits. So how is this, you know, is business going to come? What does business need to be attracted to Salem? How is this going to grow the economy and create jobs? And this was sort of a little bit of an aside, but we did hear some people say that, you know, Salem needs to be an attractive place for young people to, you know, to, to stay if they grew up here, to relocate if you have a young family, and so wanting to, these infrastructure investments to be something that's going to make the city attractive for the next generation as well. Okay. And I'll just finish with just some additional considerations. Homelessness was, when we asked what's the most important issue, it might not have literally, it might not have literally been every person that said homelessness, but every person would have said homelessness if I didn't ask them to say somebody else, something else, right? Homelessness is voters' top concern. You saw that in the Community Satisfaction Survey. Some of the priority projects had to do with acquiring land for shelters and affordable housing. Being able to connect this project and what it's going to deliver to people's top concern is going to be important going forward. So being able to articulate that, that their issues are being heard, that you're responding to them, and, and there are solutions with this package, I think is going to be important. We did not hear much concern in the focus groups about total costs. People were much more fixated on the tax rates than they were the overall bill. That's normal, and I think that's what we should expect going forward. But I do think that if somebody wanted to oppose this or run a campaign against it, you know, a big multimillion, hundreds of millions of dollar number is going to seem concerning to some voters, probably more so than we picked up in these groups. So even though we didn't hear a lot about it here, I don't want to pretend like we might not hear about it going forward. And then, lastly, folks don't know a lot about how, what the city infrastructure is, what it costs, how it's paid for, and when people have low information about an issue, they naturally tend to listen and trust folks in their community who are leaders. Now, that's you, but that's also the, you know, folks in the business community or faith communities or the neighborhood associations, whatever it might be. We did not really press upon them, like, who might support this and who might oppose it? And if there are organized oppositions among trusted people in the community, that could be very persuasive for folks as well. And that's not something we really tested in these groups, and so I just want to put that out as a note of caution, too, that if there is organized opposition among communities of people in the, in, that voters trust, that that can make getting to yes more difficult than we picked up here. With that, I'm going to stop. I know you have more on your agenda, and I'll turn things over to you, but I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Just a second here to clear the screen. There we go. Well, I'll, I'll start off then. On transparency, were there any comments about the way the police bond measure and construction project were handled, or the library bond measure and construction were handled? I, I thought those were really, boy, if there was transparency, those two really had a lot going on, and if that doesn't do it, I'd be interested in, well, I'd, I'd be interested. It tells me there's something else we got to do.
So Mayor, what I, what I thought you were going to say was, that people raised it as a problem. And I would have to go back and look at to see if people may raise either of those as a problem. It wasn't a focus of the conversation. I am confident that they did not describe these as great successes, which is not to say that they weren't. It's to say that it's a real challenge, and I just...
But they didn't say anything about the transparency of those projects, because substantial amount of time, money, and energy was spent trying to keep the public informed on the projects as they progressed.
I would have to go back and look at the transcripts. I don't want to misspeak, but I don't recall them offering that as a great example. Again, that's not to say that they weren't great examples. I think it just really speaks to the, the difficulty of that type of communication.
Yeah.
It's essential. You're probably just always going to hear that.
Well, we, we don't have a, really an effective newspaper anymore in terms of that kind of coverage, or different kinds of coverage, but in terms of, of that kind of, of, kind of progressed, coverage of bond measures, of city government, it's more kind of, you know, iffy in the way it's done. So I thought that they had done a good job in the department, trying to reach out people, but it is interesting that that wasn't picked up on by this group of public anyway.
I don't think, it, just thinking going forward, you finding spokespeople to talk about the success of those projects in communications and, and, you know, using that as a proof point when you're talking to voters, whether it's, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, I don't know who, but if it's Chamber of Commerce or Neighbor Association leaders, say, you know, this is really, these are great examples of why we can trust the city. I think that that would be helpful.
Okay. Well, we can certainly put those into, put those up in front as, as examples of how we do it. Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, so I do have a few questions. I also want to thank our Chair of our Finance Committee, Counselor Anderson. I'm sure it's a major undertaking to look at a bond measure for up to $300 million, so I'm sure that that's no small amount of work for you, the other committee members, DHM researchers, the focus group, and of course, city staff. So I, I know that's not a walk in the park, so first of all, thank you to you and everyone behind the scenes. So as I understand it, the recommendation is for a bond up to 300 million. So what I'm trying to understand is, you guys don't know yet exactly how much it's going to cost, and we don't know exactly what project it's going to fund, I assume, because the recommendation also says to develop a plan, to engage the community, to participate in the determination of projects funded by this bond. I just want to make sure I understand what, what the ask is from the Finance Committee at this point.
John, did you, did you have that encapsulated in your information to the focus group?
We, so Counselor Anderson or someone else can answer the question maybe more directly, but, but just the way, we presented the participants in the focus groups, a $300 million bond, and the types of projects that are being considered, including fire, including transportation projects, including, it's all in the, in the report, but, but the $300 million was something that we specifically mentioned in...
But you used a categorical approach, or did you cite specific, I, I noticed street sidewalks, bridges, you know, things like that, affordable housing as well as purchasing land for, is that the way it was presented to them?
That's, that's the way it was presented. We did not say X dollars to X type of project, though. It was, these are sorts of projects, and which are the priorities for you? We didn't say, and we also didn't in the group promise that any particular project was going to be done.
Tom, does that happen, you guys gave them?
That is. If you look at the, on our, the report, item 2A on today's agenda on page three, there's a little chart there that says there's the six or seven different areas, you know, the city area, safe community, et cetera, and, and four of those are fixed costs, fire, information, building improvements, fire stations, and three of them are scalable. So those are housing, streets, bridges, parks, and rec. So that's where the up to 300 million comes from. And I point out that the last Streets and Bridges bond in 2008, our Public Works Department and everybody else did such a good job that we had money left over to use on other projects.
Yeah. They just extended its life, it seems like, and that, and that's part of why you don't give a real specific sort of end date.
That's right. And I'd also note, Mr. Mayor, that that was 2008. This is 2022. We had 14 years, you know...
Of life on that bond. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's been pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Vanessa, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just had a, so I, as I understand it, I know we're in work session mode, but I just wanted to get some of these preliminary questions under the way. When I was looking at some of the materials, it sounds like there are preliminary project categories, so yes, there are some general categories, but it sounds like the, there will be opportunity for public participation and input into what we want those projects to be, how we want to prioritize this huge, potentially huge pot of money. I'm taking, I'm assuming that those opportunities for public engagement will happen.
That's how we, was always, that is how we've always done it.
Great.
So I'm not too concerned about public, public access to the discussion. It'll also involve councilors we've not met yet, and it'll involve, over the years, as well as interested publics who will bring new issues or new ideas to the table. This, this has a life of at le, what, at least five years, Tom?
Yeah.
Is that the idea?
Yeah, it's 10. It's 10.
10, okay.
10 years. And that's why I pointed out that the last bond had a life of almost, well, I don't know if it's gone yet, but it, it's been 14 years since we went out for another one of these bonds.
Right. And we have done each of those proposed projects in public as part of, and with various types of involvement. Is that how that's worked?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that make sense, Vanessa? Does that? Jim?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. John, just to start with, when we get the annual citizen survey, it's referred to as statistically valid. So I'm, I'm curious, the 20 folks that you talked to, were they picked at a point where you can say it's statistically valid for the whole city, or is it just the 20 people?
Some more in between, but I would not say that this is representative in the way that the survey is. First of all, we... First of all, we talked to many fewer people. Uh, and so I, I, I could actually calculate emergent area, but that's probably not the way to think about these results. We recruited the participants to, you know, be similar to what the demographic with the profile likely voters would be. But when you talk to 20 people, they're going to have some groups that are overrepresented and other represented. What I would think about this is, you know, how do, what is a, is an initial gauge in how the public might respond to this? And I think that the initial gauge is the public is going to be skeptical. If they are not informed with the key information. Now, we ended up with 15 people to be supportive. Does that mean I think that 75% of Salem voters would vote yes on this? That's, I don't know. I'm, I, I can't say that from these focus groups. What I can say is that there's some initial skepticism, but also I think these results indicate that there is a real potential for success too. And that this is just one data point along the way that you're going to be collecting. It's different than a, it's also different than a community forum as well, in that we did not select folks who are super engaged or informed about the issue. So it's some, so it sort of falls somewhere in between those two. I hope that answers your question.
Um, it, it does. A couple of real quick questions if I could. There's a statement on page 13 of your report that, uh, uh, talked about the importance of the voters for affordable housing or shelter. But there's a, seems to be a recognition that the issue is not just housing, but, uh, mental health services. Would you say that was a universal concept with the groups or was it mentioned by one or two folks or?
Uh, because it, we, that wasn't the necessary focus. Uh, it was mentioned by more than a couple of people. I'd say it's broadly held, but I, I don't know if it's, I, I wouldn't characterize it as universal in part because I just, I don't know. I don't think these data speak to that, but I'd say it's, it's, it's fairly broad.
Okay. And same type of question. It, uh, I can't remember. I think it's on page 14. Where if I read it correctly, when you asked the group, what would be a reason to oppose the ballot measure? Uh, not addressing homelessness seemed to be one of those things that could cause opposition. Was that universal or again, just one or two people?
Uh, again, I wouldn't say it's universal in part because the data just don't speak to that, but it was pretty widely held. Again, that we could, how much someone might, I don't know if I'm, for lack of a better word, excuse me, attack, attack the issue. Like that might be something that an opposition group might, might do. Um, again, homelessness is the people's, is voters' absolute primary number one concern. They want to see it to be addressed. So things that distract from that or, or things that they don't see helping to address that, um, they're going to have questions about. I, I think we should expect that.
And, and last question, if I could, real quick. Would you assume that that high priority of wanting to address homelessness, homelessness carries forward into what the bond money should be spent on?
Yes, but at, at how much, at what level and what's the right project? That I don't, I don't think these data can say. Um, but yes, I do think that voters would expect that a high priority for funding for the city and an ask at the ballot would help address their number one concern.
Thank you. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, you had a person who was, uh, supportive and then at the end of the day, they were not supportive. Did, did you determine why that was, what led to that? And is that something that, um, you think we need to, that we take, take a further look at or was it just a one-off?
Oh, I, I, I think what we learned from this is that voters' opinions on the issue are not fixed. And that they're going to be able, I mean, we should expect that they're going to be movable in different directions, that different concerns, if they're made salient, can move people to know. And if it just is a matter of just, you know, politics one-on-one, it's easier to get people to a no than it is to a yes. Um, so some of those concerns I talked about, you know, lack of trust in how the money is, the, the oversight of the money, how it's going to be spent, emphasizing projects that aren't a priority, uh, to that individual voter could be a concern. Distrust about whether or not tax rates are going to go up or not. I mean, there was a little conversation. I talked about taxes not going up and someone corrected me and said, well, taxes are going to go up. I'm going to pay more. My tax rate might not. And it's, you know, things, you know, if people are looking for a no, they're going to, they can find one. They'll find one.
Understood. I, I was thinking though, that he, the person, whoever it was, went from yes to no without any further input. So I was just curious if we knew.
Oh, there, there probably is some input, but it's just, it's, whatever it was, in my head, it's not standing out as the thing right now. I can try to go back and figure out if I can identify what it was for that one person. There were, I, so one other thing, like, there's a lot of, I'm showing you the support and opposed, a lot of that support is pretty soft, right? They're, they're not, they're not willing to go campaigning for this yet.
Understood. Thank you.
I was impressed though, that as people got information, they moved quickly, uh, to yes. I mean, as long, you know, as, as it became clear, but at least is being talked about, the broadest sense, which is a, a stabilized, uh, bonding amount for whatever it is, five, is it 10 years, uh, at a buck 28? I mean, that's a, it's an interesting, that was an interesting concept when we saw it. Trevor, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, that, that, you know, is pretty much what my comment was too, is that having served in the Finance Committee, you know, we're at this unique opportunity for no new taxes, no increase in tax rates, that we can stabilize the, the bonds and get $300 million to address critical issues in the community. And what I'm hearing you say, John, is that, or at least the data seems to suggest that the biggest, you know, thing that can get people to move from skeptical to supportive is learning that there's no new taxes.
Yeah, yeah, people, I mean, I would be a little, be a little flip, but good stuff for no more money? That, that, that sounds, that sounds pretty good to voters.
And I guess my follow-up question would be, does anything else come close? Does the, you know, framing this with the perspective of the number one issue that people identify, is homelessness close to that? Or is it really all about the fact that there's no new taxes?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, because of the way we structured the groups, the first thing we sort of introduced was about tax rates before we really, before we had a full robust conversation about all the different elements. And we didn't talk about timing or what the weight on homelessness or purchasing land for affordable housing and shelters, what that was. So what I can only say with confidence is that informing them about tax rate gets a big jump. And I, I, I would assume that if we led the group with, that this is going to go towards projects that you prioritize, that also would have helped. Um, but what I know for sure is that the tax rate makes a big difference.
And then my, my question at the end of all this is, we really are in the process of crafting what that $300 million would go to. I mean, as Tom had said, some of the costs are fixed, but some of it's scalable. So this is the beginning of a process where we get to pick based on community input, what is prioritized? That's, is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that is correct, uh, more or less. And, and we can, we can talk about what that more or less means if, if council would like this evening or, or certainly come back to. Uh, quickly, the, where there is some, uh, I think constraint as far as engagement would be on the, on the fire apparatus, and that is because of the, the current condition of the fleet and, and, uh, the needs we have for the fire department. Certainly, uh, some, some council input, uh, i- if council, if the mayor does appoint a, a council work committee, you know, that work committee could provide some guidance. But that is one of our, our most pressing, if not the most, uh, pressing need, uh, for, for some bond funding is the, the replacement of our, of our fire apparatus.
And I, I guess I do have a question on that specifically. I was surprised when I started talking to this, uh, in the neighborhood associations that I went to, people don't seem to be aware of the increasing cost of maintaining those rigs that are now, you know, 14, 15 years old. Did that, did that come up? Did people just not, they were unaware of how much cost there is right now in maintaining those old rigs?
And we didn't talk about it quite in that respect, but it did not come up as when we asked, you know, what are some infrastructure needs in the community? That wasn't one of them, right? That's just, uh, you know, people don't see them. People, if they saw it, they wouldn't likely, you know, be able to tell whether or not there was a need there or not. And there, it's not a message that the community, at least the participants that we talked to, have heard.
Yeah. When you see a fire truck, it is clean waxed and the lights work. And it's, it's staffed with somebody's going to save your life. So I, you know, that I suspect there's this feeling of confidence that the fleet is in good shape. I think it's just a misunderstanding of how it deteriorates over 14 to 15 years. And, uh, that, that I would assume is going to be one of those discussions. The other, uh, that I'm a little concerned about, I just mentioned it, uh, is that this has a long life. Uh, and that tying down the specific, uh, investments as project by project is going to be very difficult from, uh, as we've seen how rapidly, uh, all this stuff changes, that you may find yourself, or you'll have set up the future councils for, for a real blow when suddenly a project that's described in the bond measure materials doesn't materialize because it, it no longer is either needed or part of the broader discussion. I, I don't know how the, I don't know how to handle that part of it. I'll look forward to others' real, really good advice on how that's done. It, it, it's very tricky with these long-term bonds to fully describe what's going to happen. So. Virginia?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I'm trying to formulate my question here. Um, I, I think I have a couple of them, trying to sort them out. Um, when I was looking at page 20, um, and the different income levels, I know you noted this in the document that, that you kind of had some hesitations a little bit because we were only able to get, uh, one person in, in one of the groups with less than 25,000. Um, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that and what that means to you, um, as a professional in this. Um, but then I also want to talk to you about the age group that was not represented at all, um, 18 to 24. Now, I remember myself at 18 to 24, and I'm pretty sure I probably would not have sat in a group, um, to talk about things or have seen the value in this conversation. But I want to know if you know, just in your expertise, um, what this age group in general is worried about, concerned about, um, as we move forward with something like this, um, and then I'll follow up with some other questions.
Sure. So you're identifying two really important things. Uh, to circle back, uh, I think it was Counselor Lewis bringing this up. Um, within a group of 20 people, you're going to have some demographic groups that are underrepresented. Now, this was intended to be, represent likely voters who are going to be older and they're going to be higher income. That doesn't mean, well, that's just, that's just a fact, but we did not hear from those lowest income books who, who need to be heard from. And so do not end here, let's say that. Same thing with younger people. Don't end here. Find ways to make sure we're hearing from those groups as well. In terms of what younger people want, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think it's radically different from what other age groups want. We tend to see younger people be a little bit more supportive of tax measures, um, just in general, be more willing to say yes to things than, than older voters. Although I'll note that in the Community Satisfaction Survey, we did really pick up some differences about sort of needs and perspectives about the city from younger voters. Um, and I think that that's pretty consistent with what we've seen other places, concerns about being welcoming, about public safety. Um, I, so there probably are some differences there that have to speak to broader cultural issues. You know, younger people want good roads. They're probably more likely to be interested in active transportation options. So things like biking, walking, uh, that measure, they tend to have, in general, tend to have, share a higher, uh, level or a different perspective around homelessness, where they may be more, um, housing solution oriented, where young, or older voters may be more public health and public safety oriented in, in their sort of perspective. Younger folks are more likely to have kids in the household. That's not really like a direct sort of thing about this measure, but the fact that education isn't sort of something that's going to be solved with this may be something that they ask about. So should be thoughtful about how you address that.
John, John, will you be here during our discussion, uh, of the agenda item on this or are you leaving us?
I, I can stick around as long as, as long as you'd like, Mayor. I'll just say one other thing before I let it slip. They'd be more, they would prioritize environmental issues more.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Let me just a quick one, Virginia.
Sure, yeah. Um, I, I guess what I'm, well, you know what? It's not for John, so I'll hold back, Mayor.
Okay, we'll be discussing this again, so it'll give you more opportunity. Okay, then I'm going to adjourn this meet, this, uh, work session and we'll move then to, uh, the Housing Authority meeting. So meeting's adjourned.
Good evening. I will call the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, October 25th, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
I'm here.
Commissioner Anderson?
So am I.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. And we have nobody signed up for public comment for the Housing Authority, uh, Vice Chair Stapleton, the consent calendar.
Yes, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the consent calendar consists of item 3.1A. That's a September 27th, 2021 draft Salem Housing Authority minutes. Um, action items are 3.2A, intergovernmental agreement, uh, with the City of Salem for administrative services. Item 3.3A, Euquina and South Fair Affordable Housing. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll give, uh, Ms. Yootz an opportunity to speak, uh, about the, about item 3.3A, maybe under her comments on information reports. Uh, if the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Excuse me, that was Commissioner, Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Commissioner Leung?
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi.
Commissioner Nordike?
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Hi.
Chair Hoy?
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you. We have no public hearings and no special orders of business, but we do have an information report. Ms. Yootz, on our, I would hope that you would start by addressing 3.3A, the Euquina and South Fair Affordable Housing project in your comments, if you would please, because this is pretty, pretty significant and monumental for us. So appreciate any thoughts you have.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Yootz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. It's a nice and exciting night, a, a big stepping stone for us to get to the closure, um, the closing status of Euquina Hall and South Fair Apartments. Uh, this has been a long-awaited project. We've been working on it here at this agency since 2015. So to finally meet this day and, uh, get to the finish line is exciting for this entire agency and all the developers, architects and everybody involved. There's been many delays in this, um, mostly related to subdivision planning, um, outside of the control of the Housing Authority, but this just goes to show how much work goes into each and every one of these projects that we, uh, design and develop with all the partners. Um, Euquina Hall is unique. It has Oregon Health Authority funds for serious and persistent mental illness. And, um, the entire project itself will have, uh, wraparound services. When we provide wraparound resident services, we administer those to all of our residents at our sites, not just those who are, are dedicated to the 20 units or so that are listed as serious and persistent mental illness. This project will also be able to help with, um, coordinated entry and ensuring those most in need are those that are going to be able to utilize this, uh, facility. Uh, this brings 54 additional one-bedroom apartments to the City of Salem, which is very exciting. Um, that is probably our hardest one to fill because of the lack of one-bedroom, uh, affordable apartments. So, uh, we anticipate the construction timeline to be 13 months. Uh, we do have, have secured a November 18th closing date, and we have a backup date hopefully in December in case we don't quite meet that timeline, which we're, we're getting very close to with some of our head subsidy layer reviews. So at this time, we're, we're nearing the completion. And, and just a little bit about the low-income housing tax credit, um, ownership entity is what you see in the omnibus resolution and a lot of LLC names and changes of hands. Uh, this is a wonderful opportunity that for low-income housing tax credit, it's a dollar-for-dollar tax credit investment for affordable housing. This has really been leading the way for, uh, providing additional affordable units to the stock in America. Um, this is a private-public partnership in this case, and without our, our, our private investor, um, coming in with coming in with ninety-nine percent ownership, we probably would not be able to make this reality come true. So this, they are the ninety-nine percent ownership share in this that enables them to be able to get the low-income housing tax credits to provide this opportunity to Euquina and South Fair. South Fair is an existing project of ours. It's been on Fairgrounds Road since the seventies. It's pretty well-known in the City of Salem. We're very excited to revitalize and bring that one back to life. Years ago, Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency had a head start facility that they outgrew on that project. So in turn, our mission at the Housing Authority is to provide more units, and that's exactly what we're doing. We're turning the daycare into more affordable housing by bringing two additional fully accessible one-bedroom units. So exciting times for us.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. This is a great day for the Housing Authority. And, you know, it's interesting that these projects address exactly what we're hearing from the researcher about addressing homelessness, dealing with mental illness. So we are, we're providing housing for people that without this sort of project would never end their homelessness situation. They would, they would probably remain on the streets forever without it, without this kind of project. And so I think it's really something to take note of as we go forward, that we are, we are working to give shelter to people who are the hardest to house. And, and this program is, is really going to be so important with that single, you know, the single bedroom. People with serious and persistent mental illness, it's, it's, it's huge. And I'm, I'm so proud of the work that you and your staff have done to make this happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other topics you want to touch on tonight, anything on your management report?
The only thing that I wanted to let everybody know is that we're really working on community engagement here at the Housing Authority, getting out there and, and speaking about the great work that's being done here at Salem Housing Authority by all of our staff, whether that be with the Homeless Final Assistance Program or the various projects that we have in works. And so if you do have a neighborhood association meeting or a meeting that you would like any of us, we would love to attend and speak about the great work that's being done here.
Excellent. You might get on the, the agenda of the Neighborhood Chairs Meeting. And to put that out there, because those are the folks that who are in a position to invite you to those meetings. And so if you go to that Neighborhood Chairs Meeting, all of the chairs from all the neighborhood associations attend that, you can make your two-minute pitch to get on their agendas and then probably receive a lot of invitations out.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Yutz? Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, real quick, Nicole, I, I wanted to thank you and your folks for attending the, the meetings in West Salem over the last few weeks. I know it may not seem like it, especially the one in Salem Town, but you made a huge difference. One person at a time, understanding what you're doing is all we need, and you, we accomplished that that evening. So thank you very much for being there.
We appreciate that. Like you said, it's one, even if we reach one person with the, what the mission of our Housing Authority is, it makes a difference to us.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Yutz. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And with that, the meeting of the Housing Authority is adjourned.
Very good. I'm going to call this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, October twenty-fifth to order. And as the recorder, please call a roll.
Board Member Stapleton.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
Present.
Board Member Phillips.
Here.
Board Member Liang.
Yeah.
Board Member Gonzalez.
Here.
Board Member Hoi.
Here.
Board Member Nordike.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay, very good. Any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. I have one person, public comment. Koji Shirawa is going to be commenting on three point two B. Koji's with Yamasa. And will be speaking on the Fairview URA. Koji, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Ah, good.
Should I start now, or?
Yes, you, you got your camera. Are you on?
Yes.
There you are.
Hello, everybody. My name's Koji, or my full name is Kojiro, so you will see undocumented my name as full name. I'm the CEO of Yamasa USA Joint Company, nine, sorry, two thousand nineteen. So I, I would like first, thank you for the opportunity to apply for the grant, which has been very helpful with this pandemic situation, all the costs, everything is rising. This grant means a lot for us, very helpful. You may know Yamasa USA is located in Fairview Drive, Fairview Industrial Drive and Matrona. And we've been producing soy sauce since nineteen ninety-four. And the product, the market has been growing since then. We, our business has been constantly growing through the years. And so we do have expansion plans throughout the years. But definitely, recent pandemic situation has accelerated the demand for all the foods, which kind of forced us to urgently expand the factory because we have already sold out our capacity at this moment. We are one of the very few soy sauce manufacturing in the US, and as you know, with the supply chain breakdown, a lot of people are looking for domestic suppliers right now. So with that, we have already made decision and moving forward with the adding fermentation tanks, lemon tanks on east side of the building. We haven't, we have used about fifty percent of the land so far, so future, we still planning to expand more and more, but this time it's eleven tanks. In usual times, it will cost us about seven, eight million dollars investment. Right now, it's ten million. So, and that's including foundation designing and tax itself, so. Very huge investment, but still we made that this was business, it makes businesses for us. So. We have also been working with the local businesses, so packaging supply, supply to warehouses, logistics companies. But one of the big change we made in two thousand and twenty is working with the local farmers in, in the valley. Set Gore was able to help us connect with all these farmers, and they were able to grow the wheat that we require, which is very special, different variety that usually we can't get in Oregon, but they were able to do it. So, great, this is second year that we have the contract with the farmers. And it's very wonderful to work with the, the local businesses. So with that, we are looking forward to grow more business. We're looking for more farmers to work with us. And as this factory expands, you know, the local, I think, I hope. And I believe the local economy will get better. So. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with more with the local businesses.
Great. Thank you, Koji, very much. Very glad you're here this evening. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Koji, your Yamasha plant is in my ward and next to my ward, and I want to thank you and your staff for working very closely with city compliance, because there were people in my ward up on the hill east of you who were, were hearing some high-pitched noises, and you folks did everything you could filtering and buffering and going up on the roof and doing a lot of things to help out your neighbors and be a good neighbor, and it was successfully completed, and it was a great project among the city staff, the neighbors, and your company. And I really appreciate that, and I look forward to more cooperation in the future with you and your plant. So thank you very much for that.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, thank you very much, Koji.
Thank you.
Okay, the consent calendar. Councilor Hoi?
Move approval of the consent calendar with the exception, exception of item three point two B, pulled by Councilor Anderson.
Second.
Second. Liang, okay, thank you.
So the consent calendar now consists of item three point one A, the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Item three point two A, updating the Urban Renewal Agency's real estate disposition procedures. Item three point three C, purchase and sale agreement with Chasman Family Trust for acquisition of real property located two six three Shamaka Street, northeast. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then if the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Hoi.
Hi.
Board Member Nordike.
Hi.
Board Member Liang.
Hi.
Board Member Lewis.
Hi.
Board Member Anderson.
Hi.
Board Member Phillips.
Hi.
Board Member Stapleton.
Hi.
Board Member Gonzalez. Board Member Gonzalez. Mayor, excuse me, Chair Bennett.
Hi. Want to take another call on?
Sure. Board Member Gonzalez.
Okay.
Check in with them later.
Yeah, very good. We'll move then to special orders of business. Councilor Anderson, three point two B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation that we adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash ten to implement an FURA grant.
Second.
Second by Hoi.
I, I, I think this is terrific, and part of the reason I pulled it was to again, announce to the, the public and the people who are in this park, there's some funds available, but I do have some questions about it that I didn't quite understand. The first is, we've, we've, we've allocated, as I understand it, there's two point two million dollars left after the tack and increment funds have been expanded, and we no longer have tax increment in that area. But six hundred and, six hundred thousand have been a spent of that two point two million. So is that saying we have one point six million dollars still available for grants in that area? Is, is, I don't know who wants to answer that.
I think Annie will answer that for you.
Okay.
Good evening. Annie Gorski, Economic Development Manager with the city. That's correct. We have two point two million available and unallocated in the Fairview Urban Renewal Area budget. We are no longer collecting tax increment within Fairview. So these are the last funds that will be available. The, the, in terms of the commitment tonight, if you choose to approve the recommendation, this would commit up to six hundred thousand for a new grant program in Fairview. That doesn't mean we have applications for six hundred. The application that we're aware of is from, for Yamasa for three hundred, but you are correct, that leaves one point six million.
And am I also correct, Ms. Gorski, this happened sometime in the downtown URA where if it's more than three hundred thousand, it has to come to the council for, for special approval, and there are certain criteria that need to be met. I think it's like two out of seven or two out of five or some figure that needs to be met. Is that correct?
It is correct that any exception, any grant amount in excess of the three hundred would need to come back to the agency board for approval. Including in the guidelines tonight, which you're considering, we did not include exception criteria like we have for downtown. We certainly could come back to that, but we have not presented that tonight. Yes.
Okay, I understand that, but will there be those criteria if it comes above three hundred thousand?
Yes, if we were to come back to you with an exception, we would develop criteria for you to consider. Yes.
Then a, a couple other questions. I'm looking at the background where you talk about FURA plan. I presume you call it FURA, FURA? Anyway, it says you've invested eighteen million, and it's resulted in assessed property value of about one hundred seventy million. My question is, where did this one hundred seventy million start before we spent eighteen million? In other words, it wasn't a zero, it had some value.
There was some value in the Fairview Urban Renewal Area when it was created. I should step, step back. It was state-owned. This was in state ownership, so it was not generating property tax. It was largely undeveloped. We used Fairview Urban Renewal Funds to put in the infrastructure, the sewer, water, the roads, wetland mitigation to then bring the jobs. So much, so the Fairview Urban Renew, or the Fairview Industrial Park that you see today is as a result of those investments.
Okay, so the eighteen million was spent on the things that you just were talking or speaking of. So in effect, for all practical purposes, it really did go from zero to a hundred eighty, a hundred seventy, just by our expended, expending eighteen million dollars.
And because of the prior state ownership, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, this is a good thing. This is an example of how small, relatively speaking, small amounts of city investment and infrastructure can lead to very much higher property values and value of businesses, which then in return comes back to the city. Is that, was that a fair assessment?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's what we're trying to do in urban renewal, is it not? Okay, so this is a good deal. Congratulations, Ms. Gorski, to you and everybody else. One final question. The next paragraph talks about small business loans, three of them that were forgiven. Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes, so the prior program that we had in Fairview was a forgivable loan program. So up to seventy percent of the loan could be forgiven based on job creation. Since that, because of the pandemic, we were contacted by the three businesses that received the loan and were still making payments that, given their loss of income due to the pandemic, they were unable to pay on the loan, and they requested forgiveness. So that came to the agency board for consideration last year, and that was approved.
Good. I think that's another terrific thing. And so this is a great item, and thanks to you and your staff for moving the, the FURA forward.
Very good. Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll on this one.
Board Member Nordike.
Hi.
Board Member Lewis.
Hi.
Board Member Stapleton.
Hi.
Board Member Anderson.
Hi.
Board Member Phillips.
Hi.
Board Member Liang.
Hi.
Board Member Gonzalez.
Hi.
Board Member Hoi.
Hi.
Chair Bennett.
Hi. Okay, we will go to information reports. Annie, is that? Does anyone have any questions on information reports? It looks like it is really simple. It's administrative purchases. Anyone want to question Annie about that, just to find out what they're spending the money on? Okay. You're off the hot seat then. Councilor Hoi, you want to give me a motion on that? Oh, no, we don't need a motion. We're done. We are adjourned. Okay? We'll go to the city council meeting for October twenty-fifth. I'll call that to order if the recorder would please call the roll.
Council Stapleton.
I'm here.
Council Anderson.
I am also.
Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Liang.
Yeah.
Council Gonzalez.
Here.
Council Hoi.
Here.
Council Nordike.
Here.
Council Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Uh, uh, here. Okay. Do you have any additions or deletions, counselor?
No.
No, okay. Okay, any counselor comments? Okay, the city manager.
I'd just like to draw to council's attention as well as the public. We do have an opportunity for nonprofits and for-profit organizations that are serving Salem to apply for the city's federal allotment of grant money, community development block grant, home funds, and, and an amount of, of city general fund. So a total of of close to a little, little bit over five million dollars to help end homelessness, expand affordable housing, provide support for public service programs, enhance access to public facilities, and promote economic development. The opportunity to apply Uh, the opportunity to apply information on, on how to apply is on the city, uh, website. The application period closes December 22nd. So I would encourage nonprofits to take a look, and as you interact with, uh, your constituents and, and others in the community, to please have, uh, nonprofits as well as for-profit organizations take a look at that opportunity. Those funds have been, uh, supplemented by the federal government because of, of COVID, and it is an opportunity to, to help, uh, help advance our progress on those, uh, those priority areas that I mentioned.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation on, uh, the Eye Protect and Respect project. I'd like to call on, it looks like Chief Womack. Help us get us started on this one.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, councillor, city manager, Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. Uh, I'll be, I'll be brief. Uh, I think, uh, I'd like to let Allison do most of talking about this project from Liberty House, but I did want to mention, uh, first of all, thank and recognize Allison, and Crystal will be speaking tonight, and all the staff at Liberty House for the incredible work they do around child safety and welfare in our community. This new program that they're talking about tonight, I'm excited about it, I think it's valuable. And it's just another example of their passionate commitment to child safety and welfare. And so, um, I did want to mention that, and just emphasize for everyone's awareness that the Salem Police Department and Liberty House have a longstanding partnership, very much appreciated and valued. And this year, we've continued to build upon that partnership, uh, by enhancing our relationship around, and our collaboration around child abuse response and investigations, and effective prosecutions of offenders, to hold offenders accountable and protect children. And this multidisciplinary team, as we talk, call it here, uh, involves Oregon Department of Human Services, Child Welfare Division, Liberty House, of course, the District Attorney's Office, uh, several of our surrounding law enforcement agencies and ourselves. And, uh, thankful that we have this new facility here, it allowed us for some new space so that we can enhance this collaboration and host more of the meetings and collaboration right here within the facility. So we've committed some more resources and space to that effort. Um, and it's, it's beneficial, we're meeting almost on a regular, like, on a daily basis to centralize the intake of these investigations and coordinate, cross-boundary coordinate and collaborate, um, to ensure successful prosecutions. So I'm just very appreciative of that longstanding partnership, and wanted everyone to be aware that we're continuing to expand upon that as we go. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Liberty House.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, uh, Allison Kelly, will you be first up? Good to see you.
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh, Allison is the CEO of Liberty House. For those of you who haven't met her yet, uh, really a great human being here. So Allison, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief Womack and councillors, it's an honor to be with you tonight. And I'll start by saying that this isn't the easiest topic, but we have some really exciting resources. And thank you to City Manager Steve Powers, been letting us be able to share this information with you. Um, I think what Chief Womack was describing really also makes everything better for the children and the families involved in these situations. And what we've seen, you know, really since the advent of the smartphone in 2007, is that the technology has left out way faster than us grownups could keep up with. And what it's led to is some, you know, things that have been in the news recently, even in the Wall Street Journal and other news agencies, reporting on how damaging social media can be to children and their self-esteem. We've known that for a long time. Um, parents pestered by their little ones, you know, can I have a cellphone? When can I get a cellphone? And really not knowing when. And from my standpoint, a cellphone's about like giving your child a nuclear weapon. It's the most dangerous thing we can give a child. Um, and kids, believe it or not, children coming into elementary school now feeling like they have to send a, a picture of their naked private body part in order to be in, in order to be accepted, feeling like they have to do that. And that the average age of sending that kind of material, of sending it and, and receiving unsolicited somebody else's picture ranges between eight and 10. So childhood's very different than it was many years ago. And we've been studying this issue, and I want to again point to the close work we do with our detectives, because it was a detective, as a result of this MDT that Chief Womack was describing, that in a meeting one day said, "I just wish there were a way to get the message out to youth that if you send that picture, it's out there forever, and it'll cause harm." And we're seeing that. And the thing that we don't like to see that's happened across the country and in our community is that children become so despondent with the bullying and the humiliation that happens, they do get to the point where they feel they have no option other than to end their life, leaving behind just devastated family, community, school. So the project that we have, and Crystal Deffenbaugh is on our call tonight, and she's sharing her screen to show the website. This website is available right here, right now, for you, for our entire community. And it addresses these exact things. There are resources for parents. So if your child wants that cellphone, start with a safety talk. And there are resources, how to do that, how to have a contract with your child. There are resources for children that really go to some fundamental principles that help us understand that, you know, we all like to be loved, and we all do things to be liked and loved. But you can become more aware of things that you're doing that might not be safe, and, and that the right people will like you just because you're you. You should never, ever feel like you have to do anything to get people to like you. Um, you have the power to choose. And so these are really solid principles. And so with that, um, some empowerment for children. And also, what I'm very, very proud about, um, we have resources for educators. We have been asked by the superintendents in our local area to develop a curriculum, and we have developed a curriculum, and it's being piloted this fall in every sixth grade health class in, in Salem Kaiser School District, and also being piloted in the Perry Dale School District. Um, and it is customizable to go through some of these principles in very educationally sound ways. And the last thing that I would like to offer, Crystal, do you think we can get the video going? This is a video that is available to share now. That is the script of a high schooler who received a presentation and then gave a presentation to a sixth grader. And this then was, um, these are not the real children, but these are actors, um, sharing how powerful it was. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to, to show this, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. And thank you again for, uh, helping us get the word out. Go on the website, but go ahead, Crystal. Sounds like we may not have audio, I'm so sorry about that. Yeah.
Um, people wanted to see this.
I am not sure how that, um, I, I'm not getting the optimized for video, but I will put the link, I would put it in the chat, but I don't have access to that either. Or, or my video, I'm very sorry, but I can.
No, no, that's okay.
And we'll send it out, but anyway, have questions.
Allison, what is the, uh, site that people go to, to get to this? What is the?
And I would also like to.
All I, respect and protect.
And protect.com.
Okay, and they can see the video there, is that right?
Um, is it on the video? The way, okay, thank you, Crystal.
On our organization page.
Okay, great, great.
And I would, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you have attended meetings. Councillor Nordike has been very instrumental in, in coming to some early focus groups, Councillor Stapleton as well, um, all of you. So thank you very much for your support. And just, I think our ask is, help us get the word out. This is available right now for free.
We will, we will make sure that it, uh, becomes available, and, and I'll, uh, you and I will get together offline and talk about, have you come in and, uh, talk with me about this? The mayor's message, we do, I'd like to have you come in and talk about this program, and maybe we can take another run at the video at that point. So thank you again, Allison, very, very much for all the work you do and for the tremendous you would, work you do caring for our children. Okay. Oh, you guys were recognized, did you want to talk to Virginia? Did you have questions, or?
No, I just wanted to thank them from the perspective of, uh, of a parent with young kids right now. Um, trying to navigate this, uh, is really, really challenging. And so, um, having that support from our community is really important. Uh, so thank you so much for, for doing the work.
Great. Vanessa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Kelly, thank you so much for being here, and please extend my gratitude to your entire team and to Chief Womack for your partnership. This truly is a, a vital, uh, communication line that is absolutely necessary. I have two quick questions for you, Ms. Kelly. Um, I know that COVID has thrown a lot of curveballs at entities. Um, in the past, I've done a tour of the Liberty House facility, which I thought was a fantastic way for members of the public to, to get to know what Liberty House does. Are you offering those tours again, or are you still closed down to the public? And then I have one quick follow-up.
Thank you, Councillor Nordike, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, we are not doing public tours at the moment. We are trying to limit the number of people in and out of the clinic. We have had a substantial increase in extremely serious injuries in children, and so we're trying to protect that space. We saw 20% more kids in 2020. But for anybody interested, I would encourage you to go to the Liberty House website. It's libertyhousecenter.org. You can view Google Liberty House Salem, you should be able to get there. There is a nice informational video on the website, about four minutes long, that'll show you quite a bit about it and answer questions.
Great. Councillor, you got another question?
Yeah, real quickly, I know we have a full agenda. Um, I, I've heard that a lot of community providers have turned to telehealth as a way to reach families and reach their patients. Um, obviously, you can't do a forensic exam head to toe remotely, but have you been able to come, uh, use telehealth to reach families during the pandemic?
Thank you, councillor, mayor, members of the council. The, um, mental health program, we added this program five years ago in 2016. We have eight licensed therapists who do trauma-focused mental health therapy. And during the pandemic, during the shutdown, they were able to continue seeing their clients via tele-mental health. We did not, um, use that, we're not able to use that technology because the process of diagnosing abuse or maltreatment in children is highly specialized and extremely nuanced. And we really give the gift of time and presence, but have been able to keep our facility, um, completely safe and free, and, um, partly just by employing quite a few protective mechanisms and so forth.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, again, Allison, thank you very much, and, and, uh, Crystal for joining us this evening, and we'll, uh, get together again. Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on then to the consent calendar, Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent calendar with the exceptions of Item 3.2A, pulled by Councillor Hoy, 3.2B, pulled by Councillor Lewis, 3.3B, pulled by Councillor Anderson, and 3.3C, pulled by Councillor Lewis.
Second.
So that leaves us with 3.3A, an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Administrative Services. Item four point, nope, that's a public hearing, that's it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
When you just get labeled the consent calendar with all this.
I apologize, I missed, I missed 3.1. So I, we also have 3.1A, the October 11th, 2021 drop city council minutes, and 3.1B, October 18th, 2021, drop joint city council and planning commissioner work session.
Just take a look at it real quickly, okay? Make sure I've got the right. Okay. Any discussion on the consent calendar? The recorder, please call a roll.
Councillor Nordike.
Hi.
Councillor Lewis.
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councillor Anderson.
Hi.
Councillor Phillips.
Hi.
Councillor Leung.
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councillor Hoy.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi, okay, motion passes. Yeah, move us along here for a second. Oh, I want to, uh, I'm gonna just ask your consent. I'd like to go back to, uh, public comment and bite up, uh, Carol Snyder, if she's here right now. There she is, hi, Carol.
Hi. My, uh, item isn't on your agenda, are you sure I can talk now?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless you want to sit here all evening.
Oh, no, I mean, I do, but, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Carol.
Seven, I'm currently the president of Salem Parks Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) charity organization, and what we mostly do is advocate for Salem City Parks and raise money to make improvements in the parks. And tonight, I want to talk about a project we want to embark on, raising money for the restoration of the Eco Earth Globe and Riverfront Park. We've been in conversation with the Public Works Department and the Salem Public Art Commission, and we recently sent all the council members a letter outlining our proposal, and I hope, and it's no longer the wonderful charming mosaic sculpture that was built by the community and gifted to the city in 2003. It was dedicated to celebrate the multicultural community that is Salem. But now nearly a third of Africa has fallen off. Also chunks of the vicinity of Peter Courtney Bridge and the Mary Frank Woodbury Amphitheater, it has become even more prominent and noticed. From the ramp leading up to the new amphitheater, the view of Eco Earth is better than ever. We can now see North America. In 2019, the city hired a professional restoration firm to assess the deterioration and estimate the cost of restoration. That estimate was nearly $300,000 for a professional firm to do the work. That plus the cost in time for the city to administer the process, from seeking the bids to writing up contracts and specifications, and then overseeing the project. We know that the City of Salem has lots of other pressing needs to meet right now. And since Eco Earth was a community built to start with, we believe that there are still many generous and civic-minded citizens in town who would gladly donate funds for its much-needed restoration. They just need to be asked. We are offering to raise the $300,000 through donations and grants if the city is interested and will agree to invest the effort to see the project through. We think it will take us about two years to raise that much money. But the longer we wait, the more deterioration we'll see in Eco Earth. So we want to get started right away, like maybe next month. Thank you.
Very good, Carol, I'm really, uh, happy to see the foundation get involved in this. We've been looking at this for several years, trying to figure out how we're gonna move ahead on this. Uh, you're stepping up really, I think, will drive this forward, yours and Mr. Powers' commitment to, uh, uh, city assistance on this, I think, really will help us move this through. So thank you so much for stepping up on this. It's really a great, uh, a, a great thing. And I know former Mayor Gertin Rich is going to be absolutely thrilled to hear this, uh, this news. So, thank you. Councillor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Carol, I want to also thank you for, um, your offer of support for this, it's very important. And, uh, for those that may want to make a donation, uh, like I do, I'm assuming I can write a check to the Salem Parks Foundation and just specify in the memo line that this is for the Eco Globe.
That's probably a yes.
It looks like she's frozen, but I, I met with Ms. Snyder recently on this topic, and I can tell you, yes, that's exactly how you can do it, Councillor Lewis. Also, if you're a person who shops online, say, maybe at a large retailer like Amazon, you can also designate
That's right.
the Salem Parks Foundation as the rep, as the recipient of your Amazon Smile donation. Uh, they're, they're listed on there, so that's another way to give, uh, to the Parks Foundation.
Very good, thank you, Councillor Hoy. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, any further discussion on that? We'll be hearing more about this as time passes. Okay, we will go then to our public hearing. So I'll call this public hearing director and ask the recorder to take us into this one.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering initiation of assessment procedures on properties within the Sleepy Hollow Phase One Water System for water system improvements. The criteria applicable to the proposal are set forth in SRC Chapter 21.015. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria that person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation and no individual signed up to testify.
Very good. Who's the staff presenter? Jason. How are you?
Hi.
Why don't you go ahead, Jason? Just take us take us down the short version of Sleepy Hollow here.
Yes, sir. Am I, are you seeing my screen?
Nope.
And you should know.
There we go.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow counselors. My name is Jason Poley. I'm a utilities planner for the Public Works Department. Tonight, we will be discussing a project to integrate the private Sleepy Hollow Community Water System into the city's water system and asking council to authorize the initiation of project activities. At the completion of the project, council may authorize the assessment of all or part of the costs of the project properties that are specially benefited. This is authorized by Salem Revised Code, Chapter 21. For some background, excuse me, the Sleepy Hollow Water System is a is a small private water system just off of Sunnyview Road Northeast. From the map, you'll see it's just east of McKay High School and Blanchett Catholic School. It's located in Ward Six and is wholly within the city of Salem city limits. The water system was established in the late 60s and early 70s as a private development. As such, the water system supplies water from a private groundwater well to the 44 homes and one clubhouse within the water system. Beginning in 2012, their routine water sampling has detected elevated arsenic levels in their drinking water. Many times, these levels are exceeding the maximum contaminant level set forth by the US EPA and Oregon Department, or excuse me, Oregon Drinking Water Services. Sleepy Hollow has been under two separate enforcement actions to find a solution to the arsenic that they are serving to their customers. In March of 2020, after an initial engineering evaluation that looked at several options, including treatment of their groundwater, the members of the Water Association voted to ask to join the city of Salem's water system. In doing so, the city started working with Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services and looking for funding for this project. We've previously been the council asking for and applying for a loan through the state's Safe Drinking Water revolving loan fund. This this loan was ultimately awarded. And we are now initiating the necessary contract documents to secure that funding to begin the project activities. The project will replace the existing two-inch and four-inch PVC water distribution system that was installed in the late 60s and bring it up to city standards with four-inch and eight-inch ductile iron pipe. The city, the project is being designed by city engineers. It is being designed to meet current city of Salem design standards and will be consistent with the with the rest of the city's water system. Existing, excuse me, the existing groundwater well that's currently contaminated with arsenic will be disconnected from the system and will no longer be in use. When project activities commence, hopefully later this year, we anticipate switching over the residents of the Sleepy Hollow Water District to city water customers by mid-March. It also should be noted that since these properties are within the city of Salem city limits, they are currently wastewater and stormwater services customers. So they are already billed by the city for those services. The total project cost is just over $1.1 million, as estimated by our engineers. The way this this project will break out is we anticipate receiving the $1.1 million loan from the state of Oregon. Of that $530,000 based on the current estimate would be fully forgiven. The customers, the residents of Sleepy Hollow Water District, have agreed to a $5,000 per connection assessment, bringing their total contribution to the project at $225,000. And the city of Salem would contribute and subsidize the rest of the project at the tune of $377,000. That being said, this is based on engineer's estimate. The numbers could be higher or lower depending on what the project ultimately comes in when the bids are completed. The forgivable amount from the state will be up to 50% of the total project cost with an additional $30,000 that is guaranteed for project administration and project management. So the numbers that you're looking at are subject to change. What we would like to do is maximize the amount of forgivable money that we receive from the state of Oregon. The $225,000 is locked in from the residents of the Sleepy Hollow Water District. And so the city of Salem's portion of this project could change depending on, as I said, how the bids come in. Under Salem Revised, Salem Revised Code, Chapter 21, it allows council to initiate the improvements of a project such as this. That initial approval was given at your October 11, 2021 board meet or, excuse me, council meeting. And then upon this initial public hearing, if council authorizes, the city will begin project activities and commence the improvements. Once those improvements are completed and the costs of the project have been certified, we will return to city council and hold another public hearing that will allow the city to assess those properties, the $5,000 per connection, and complete the project. So that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. There are no members of the public signed up to comment. Are there any questions? Jason, just out of curiosity, is the arsenic in the water a function of the medium where the well is drawing its water? I mean, is it coming out of the out of the ground, or is there something else going on out there?
Yes, Mayor, with that, the area in northeast Salem is because of the nature of the alluvium that the aquifer draws for, arsenic is quite a common problem for for medium to deep groundwater wells in the area.
Okay, great.
We've seen that arsenic problem. And if you know, we have several wells in the Janray area that we inherited when we took over that water system, and those those contain elevated levels of arsenic as well.
Yeah, I've seen elevated arsenic levels up in the Sandy Am Canyon as well, often associated with sort of volcanic act, you know, prehistoric volcanic activity in the way it lays down riot of chemicals. It's interesting. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Hoy, do you want to make a motion?
I move the city council authorize staff to begin project activities to disconnect homeowners from the Sleepy Hollow Phase One Water System and provide connection to the city's water system consistent with the plans for the project.
Second. Second by Counselor Phillips. Any discussion, Counselor Hoy?
I just would like to say this is an important project for the folks in my ward. Actually, Sleepy Hollow, I could, if I threw a rock out my back door, I would hit Sleepy Hollow. So it's very close to my house, actually. I live just one street over. And it's an important project for them. They approached the city to take care of this. They, you know, they tried a lot of options. I know I've talked with staff about this. They tried a lot of alternatives that just wouldn't pan out, and they decided this was their best course, and I think it's the right thing to do. So happy to support it.
Right. Any further discussion? Okay, with the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll go back then to the polls from the consent calendar. We'll begin with 3.2A, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council Adopt Resolution 2021-42 to approve the property tax exemptions for 11 applications owned by nonprofit affordable housing owners in accordance with SRC 2.850 to 2.910.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this for a couple of reasons. Primarily, I wanted to be able to highlight the the existence of these properties and the contribution the city is making that allows the support of these portable housing projects to to exist, because probably without these exemptions, they wouldn't. And so this is a really important item. It's 384 housing units within the city of Salem that are receiving a property tax exemption. And I see Ms. Gorski is here with us. I'm assuming she's fielding any questions we might have. Now, these aren't the only affordable housing units within the city, right? These are just the nonprofits. Is that correct? And could you talk a little bit about that program, how that works?
That's correct. In order for an entity to be eligible, they must be a nonprofit or charitable organization providing affordable housing specifically serving individuals earning an area median income of 60% or less. So nonprofit entities can apply annually, and then if eligible, can receive the exemption for up to 10 years.
Thank you. And these are, I noticed the list, these are dispersed throughout, pretty much throughout the city in every ward, I think, except for one or two. And I noticed that some of the projects are just coming online. Could you talk about those new projects that we'll be having?
Yes, so an entity is also eligible if they have vacant land that is owned and is planned for affordable housing. They can, they are eligible for up to two years of tax exemption prior to that development. There are two properties that are planned, and I'm just pulling those up now.
One of them is one that we've talked a lot about here, I know.
My apologies, I have.
Okay, I believe they're Dean Cottage, and then the other one is over here on Market Street in my ward. It's the the project with the United Way, the tiny home cluster community for the senior housing. So I'm really excited that that's happening. I also just want to let my colleagues know that they're out here moving moving dirt, and that project's moving along. So it's pretty exciting, and we're going to be able to give them a tax abatement here for a couple of years while they're doing that work. So just kind of, I just wanted to highlight that.
My apologies. Yes, Dean Cottage, that's
It's all right.
Northwest Development. Yes.
Yeah, Northwest Dad. Yeah.
Well, thank you for highlighting that, Counselor Hoy. I think I think we all get emails questioning kind of all the various ways the city has involved itself in the issues around affordable housing and lack of housing. And I really appreciate you highlighting this this small portion of the thousands of housing units, thousands of housing clients are served by the Housing Authority and and other programs that we support. So I think sometimes folks overlook that. Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Gorski, I note on page two of the report, it says the affordable housing that we're talking about is in seven of the eight city wards. Just out of curiosity, what is the eighth ward where there is no affordable housing?
So Ward Four.
Okay.
Is, and that doesn't mean there's not affordable housing. It just means we don't have
Not of this program.
entity, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? All right, the recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 3.2B, Counselor Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation on agenda item 3.2B.
Second. Second by Hoy.
Real quick, and I think there's a question here. We've heard in the work session the importance of communicating with the with the residents about something the size of this bond measure. And I don't know how how it, what it takes to do that and to do it effectively. The motion in front of us right now is to transfer $170,000. I'd just like to hear from, I'm not sure who it would be, that that's enough money, because I want to make sure that we've allocated enough to be successful in this communication desire.
Mr. Powers, that sounds like a question for you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Certainly, if we find that it's not enough, we can come back to you and request an additional appropriation. I will ask Courtney Knox-Bush to to highlight why we believe this initial amount is is going to give us a good start.
Courtney.
Hi, thank you. This is Courtney. I'm, I work in the city manager's office. Thank you for inviting me to speak about this. We are requesting from the private market some communications and engagement support for this very bond measure idea. We'd like to start with some general research that they would perform for us. We intend to review and report out on best practice. And then we are seeking that they develop a really broad community engagement plan for us. We have some ideas about phasing and what we would be seeking at each of those phases. And then we would all be in a role to support the communications and engagement. I have some key milestones laid out in in the request for proposals as well. The proposals are open. We're requesting proposals through next week, and I'm looking forward to getting some good ideas out of out of that process.
Very good. So this is part of the transparency around this bonding discussion. This is this is developed opportunity for the public to engage in in the, really the foundational discussion of this bond measure idea.
Yes, the communications and engagement strategy would both be looking at how to engage the community in the selection of those projects where there's a scalable opportunity for some of those fund allocations. And then it would also be support to a potential future council subcommittee on on the measure as it's growing, and and then once it's complete for accountability purposes. So that's that's the intent of the overarching strategy. It's from beginning as early as December and then through to all of the engagement. I do just want to note quickly that we we already have DHM and John Horvick under contract to do additional polling at a later state. But for this purpose initially, it's about engaging the community in selecting the appropriate projects.
Right. Okay. Very good. Any questions? All right, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll go to 3.3B, Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we approve the economic development strategy update.
Second by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say this is an excellent report. Pardon me?
We're getting a background noise there.
Okay.
You're rough on your paper.
Okay. I have to say, this is an excellent report. I really appreciated the detail and the thoughtful strategy. I just have one question, though, and this is something that I've talked about before. It's kind of becoming another hanging bridge for me under commercial on that that path. One of the things is broadband, and I know there has been some discussion of providing broadband downtown, and I'm just interested in any kind of response or thinking about what about broadband in other areas of the city, including maybe the whole area of the city. And I look at part of this under the our equity lens, the, you know, internet access and broadband is becoming vital for anybody to you know, the get along and exist in today's society. There are good things about it. We heard the bad things about it. Yeah, earlier.
How ironic.
Yeah, yeah. But so it's, it's, you know, everything has a good and bad, but But, uh, uh, so I, you know, it's, uh, this, this is getting more and more expensive that I see from my internet bills and my broadband provider. And I, I'm afraid at some point, this is going to be priced out of people of moderate or lower income means to do anything. And then they're out of a whole big segment of our society. So I guess I'd like somebody to tell me what is the status of the, there was some sort of pilot project on broadband access downtown. And I think that was kind of something to maybe get a, a part of the strategy to attract people downtown, to live downtown. And so I'd love to hear some sort of response to that and whether there's any potential of looking at some sort of, the city being the broadband provider as opposed to franchise agreements. That's more than today's discussion. I'm just putting that out there.
Annie, is, where are we on broadband?
I can answer the, your question. And if Krishna is with us tonight, she's welcome to add to it. The Downtown Bradspend Study was completed early this year. There are the, one of the things that the consultant looked at was whether or not it's feasible for the city to be service provider. And we learned through that study, initially, there's some, still some follow-up that needs to happen. I believe that needs to come back to, to council. But initial reaction was that that is likely not feasible. And so what we're looking at through the Economic Development Strategy is if we aren't service provider, how can we coordinate with the internet service providers to ensure that our, all parts of our city are served? And that, so that may involve some mapping. If providers are willing to share that data, the state is also underway, Business Oregon with an internet mapping exercise as well. So that is, that is the intent of the strategy and the role. While we may not be service provider, it is more facilitator, convener.
Well, I appreciate that very much, Ms. Gorski. But I might want to phrase it a different way. You said that all parts of the city can be served. Well, that's an admirable goal, but it seems to me the goal should be all people in the city as opposed to, well, we've got service out at this park, but it's so expensive that nobody can afford it. So that's the balance we need to look at. And I appreciate you're looking into it for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, with the recorder, please call a roll.
Councillor Phillips.
Hi.
Councillor Leon.
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez. Councillor Hoy.
Hi.
Councillor Nordike.
Hi.
Councillor Lewis.
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councillor Anderson.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Three point three C, councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation on agenda item three point three C.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Uh, real quickly, you know, I, I'm going to use the word exciting because for me, that's what this is, the opportunity to do things that, that the city truly needs and to have enough opportunity, up to three hundred million dollars. I was very active in the Streets and Bridges Bond Measure. And at that time, we wanted to make sure that we kept it under one hundred million. So this is a tremendous step. I, I am going to add one personal note. This is a tremendous opportunity for the city to address what clearly is our number one issue, and that's homelessness. I recognize the need for, for new fire apparatus and all the other things that have been mentioned. But I, I'm convinced that the community is looking for us to address the number one issue, and that is homelessness. And, and we have an opportunity to do that with this bond measure. And quite frankly, that is something to be excited about.
Very good. Councillor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo councillor Lewis's sentiments. I agree with them one hundred percent. I will note, however, that when I look at how that proposed three hundred million is being broken down, under the proposal that I saw in our materials, just fifteen million out of that three hundred million goes to acquiring property for affordable housing and shelter. And while I'm, on the one hand, I'm thrilled at the idea of a bond measure for fifteen million. But when I look at what our other priorities are in there, I encourage my peers to bear in mind that this is very much a proposal. There'll be opportunities for public input. And I want to make my voice heard right now that I think fifteen million is too small of a percentage of that three hundred million. But I know that right now, we're just in the early planning phase. Nothing is set in stone. We haven't devised all the projects. And best of all, there's no increase in property taxes with this proposal. I don't feel like we can say that enough. I feel like every time we say this, we need to say no increase in property taxes. So anyway, I just wanted to put a bookmark in the discussion. When it comes to affordable housing, fifteen million is fantastic. I'd like to see if we can do better. Thank you.
Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo councillor Lewis's and councillor Nordike's remarks. We've been hearing it repeatedly over and over for, I think every year I've been on council, that homelessness is the number one priority. This will give us a meaningful opportunity to address it. And we've got to do so with our prioritization. And so I know, like councillor Nordike said, this is a proposal in a draft, and we'll have an opportunity to weigh in with detail at some point in the future. And I look forward to that. And we, we need to address our number one priority, which is homelessness. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Phillips?
It's just more of the same. But having served on the Finance Committee with Chair Anderson and fellow councillors Gonzalez and Stapleton, this really is exciting. There, there's no wiggle room. It's just very exciting to be able to take care of some of the backlog of infrastructure needs that the city has. You know, it's around two billion dollars in need. And this is, you know, a chance to start chipping away at that in a real way while also addressing things like homelessness in our community for no new taxes. So I mean, you're going to hear more of that from us because that it's effective, but it's also very true. So this is a unique opportunity, and I hope everybody pays attention and ultimately votes yes.
Stapleton, did you want to say anything?
Well, Mayor, I was just going to be gushing just like everybody else about this. So I thought I'd hold my tongue, but since you called on me, I'll say yes. This is very, very exciting. There are so many things that we need to do in our city. And, and this is just a moment of opportunity. And I hope that we can work together as a council to get the word out and educate our voters on what a great opportunity this is and really make some headway on a lot of issues that we're facing right now. So thanks.
Very good, thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, if the recorder, please call a roll.
Councillor Leon.
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councillor Hoy.
Hi.
Councillor Nordike.
Hi.
Councillor Lewis.
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councillor Anderson.
Hi.
Councillor Phillips.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll go to information reports. Any, anyone need any information here? Okay, we'll move on then to our second reading. We have no first readings, we'll do a second reading.
Ordinance Bill number eleven twenty-one and ordinance relating to general assessment procedures amending SRC twenty-one point zero nine zero. Councillor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councillor Hoy.
Hi.
Councillor Nordike.
Hi.
Councillor Lewis.
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councillor Anderson.
Hi.
Councillor Phillips.
Hi.
Councillor Leon.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to seven point two B.
Ordinance Bill number twelve twenty-one and ordinance vacating public right-of-way located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Liberty South, Road South and Pembroke Street Southeast. Councillor Hoy.
Hi.
Councillor Nordike.
Hi.
Councillor Lewis.
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councillor Anderson.
Hi.
Councillor Phillips.
Hi.
Councillor Leon.
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. I don't see any further business. So with that, we're adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.